Welcome.
I still got.
Welcome everybody here and all our guests.
This is quicker than that for me.
Feel free to speak up when you get the public hearings coming in. But certainly have a quorum. At least it's a little warmer tonight than it was before supervisor meeting. It was cold that night. We certainly have a quorum. Need to have an organizational meeting. For that, I'll turn it over to Brady.
Yes, sir. Uh. Mr. Chairman. No longer, Mr. Chairman. Um, I will set nominations for the position of chair for the Amelia County Planning Commission.
Gee, I wonder.
Nominate Longton Moyer.
Second.
Nomination on the floor with a second for Mr. Moyer to be to return as chairman. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Maybe.
It only lasted, it only lasted one minute.
Mr. Chair, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, but I'm just a facilitator. I have no more bearing to anyone else here, so feel free to speak up. Uh, floor is now open for vice chair. I think Roy was last year.
Make a motion for Roy again.
Second.
Okay, or somebody else was second.
Motion made in second, any more nomination?
Who nomination to be close?
Nomination, all in favor of Roy Easter, vice chair, making no mistake, aye. All opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Ray. Uh, subcommittees. And terms of commissions. I don't think terms of commission for too much difference.
I will note, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, we've had two commissioners recently reappointed.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Juan Whittington and Commissioner John Aaron were reappointed. Um, Commissioner Whittington intends to stay on uh through the duration of the conference of plan uh update process.
All right.
Um, at that time, I believe he uh would like to resign and step down and then uh this Mr. Supervisor Dexter Phelps would be tasked with appointing.
Dexter.
Sorry about that Dexter Jones. Be tasked with somebody else. Now, we'll also note that there are uh a number of commissioners whose term will expire at the end of this calendar year. Uh, Commissioner Morris, uh Chair, Mr. Chairman, uh Commissioner Barnard, Commissioner Cumby, Vice Chairman Easter and Commissioner Bates will all have terms expiring at the end of the 2024 calendar year.
Kind of odd to have that many at one time. I thought they were spaced out, but.
Yeah, and that's, I'm operating off of, of course, this was a sheet that had existed prior to my onboarding. Um, I could always go back and look at appointments. I don't know if it worked out where somehow people were finishing other people's appointments or I'm not sure.
I know that's.
But I thought that was odd too to have, I think it's six of you all.
Let's have.
Uh, all, one, two, three, four.
There's like three of them.
Six of you guys, six of you all that will be up for reappointment.
All right. That's a year off, so we'll see. All right, the bylaws, uh, I don't, in this package, we had, I don't think it really changed.
Yeah, and if you guys would like to do a full review of the bylaws, I can, but it's pretty much meeting date and everything is pretty much, I think, been the same for quite some time, unless you all have knowledge that I do not.
All right, well, welcome Juan back on and John back on. So. Duration for a while. Approval of the minutes for November meeting and the no meeting in December. Any changes, recommendations?
Make a motion to approve.
So, motion made, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, making no mistake, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, I don't know if any old business write off, does anyone know of anything needs to come back? New business, public hearing on the ordinance amendment that was discussed last in November. Uh, I think this page is an update. What we had in our package.
What we had in our package. Mr. Chairman, I would like to, and I would discuss it with Brady. They have uh in the description here on number C1.
What page you talking about? The one, all right, okay.
First page. It talks about uh reasonable access right away and or easement 20 feet wide. It probably should be worded easement, a minimum of 20 feet rather than just say 20 feet.
Oh.
I mean, I, the way it's written, it sounds like you gotta have a 20-foot easement, but it should be, it could be 30, 40, 50, if you wanted to, it's just gotta be a minimum 20 feet. Think that's just a word, it's just a wording thing.
Probably been there ages, hadn't been picked up. Any more discussion or any more things need be changed? Or we turn it over to Brady to? I think most of, pretty much our pleasure from last meeting, but we'll go ahead.
Sure, uh. First of all, to the vice chairman's point on the minimum 20-foot easement, it was advertised that what would be under review for amendment this evening was subsections B and subsection C. That is a part of subsection C, um, so that is something that we can change. If it happened to be in another subsection, it wouldn't have been eligible.
All right.
Um, as it wasn't advertised, but it is a part of subsection C, so we can definitely add that to this uh ordinance amendment process legally. Um, other than that, I just had the same thing you all saw last uh time we met, which was in November, um, that these would be the three amendments. Um, the third one was not included in what I presented in November, but that was based on planning commission uh discussion, which just says in the event of extreme slash extenuating circumstances, an event individual may appeal the restrictions of this provision to the planning commission. I wanted to just go back over with you all. This is a breakdown of the other localities that surround us. Uh, Chesterfield, Cumberland, Dimwitty, Nottaway, Palatane, Prince Edward. Um, as you see, Nottaway and Prince Edward do not have a ownership requirement on the front half, meaning uh prior to accessing the family divide. Um, Prince Edward doesn't have an ownership on either half. I actually spoke with my counterpart there and they basically don't have it because um at this time, they don't feel like they have the capacity to enforce it. They don't feel like they have the time to read through the deeds and check the deeds and make sure that it's being enforced. So they elected to not even have it. Other than Prince Edward, as you see, the uh four other surrounding localities do have an ownership. Three of them have two years, Chesterfield, Cumberland, Dimwitty, and then Palatane has the five and five. Cumberland does have a pretty uh extensive period on the backend though, with the 10-year being a 12-year total time commitment to the property um for a family divide. One area where Amelia is a little bit uh less relaxed, that would still be maintained despite this ordinance amendment is the lot standards. Every locality except Palatane required the minimum standards of the respective zoning district. So if it's a three-acre district, has to be a three-acre lot. If it's a five-acre district, has to be a five-acre lot. We only require two acres regardless of the location. So if it's in a five-acre district, it could be through the family divide provision, you could cut off two acres. Um, Palatane was two acres in residential districts and three acres in agricultural districts. Um, was their provision.
But residual tract still has to maintain zoning acreage.
The residual tract still has to maintain the minimum standards of the respective zoning district. So that's similar in the other localities. It's just the other localities also require the family cut parcel to maintain the minimum standards, whereas we let it slide. So that's just a general review. I put it in a table, I didn't have it in a nice table in the November meeting, and I realized I should have done that for you all, so I just put it in a nice table for your readability.
Anybody have any questions on before we open up for public here? I mean, I think with uh C8, I think that will cover anything that happens that I was thinking, say, somebody bought the land and passed away and he gave it to six kids and none of them want to stay around here. Would they, would they be able to, if it's split equally and they didn't want the money but wanted the land? I guess they'd have to come before us.
If it's the way the ordinance text amendment is written, if the land that is up for a potential divide has been owned by the current owner or an eligible family member of that owner.
Oh, all right.
So let's say it was your father's land and he owned it and then he passed and you inherited it. You don't have to wait the five years because it's been owned by an eligible family member. It's just if it transfers from a non-eligible person to another person, that's when the five-year would start.
My understanding from that, from my business for years, is it, it's a deed to petition. Everybody gets their respective fair share. Either the lots don't meet the minimum buildable size, you still, they still don't get a building permit for it.
Yeah.
Somebody would have to buy somebody else out and put those two lots together to get a lot big enough to build on. And so, but they're entitled to that share of it, whether it's a quarter of an acre or 10 acres.
That's what I was wondering. And that's the, and that would be, we would, if a court took action on that, then of course, anything that court rules, a judge rules, we're subservient to.
But it doesn't mean you can build on it, it would still need to be rezoned. I mean, just because you sell it doesn't mean all of a sudden they're all one-acre lots. I mean, it would.
If the court created a non-conforming lot, that would be a little tricky, but the lot could meet the setbacks or something. Someone might have a route to get in the house on there.
We wouldn't have to build, issue a building permit for it. The court's only going to make a judgment on the land.
Mm-hmm.
And their, their share of the land, but, and I've been involved in some of these petition suits before and they can, uh, they're, they're entitled to that portion of property that's legally theirs, but we don't have to give a building permit for it.
I would say that's correct. All right, if it, if it's, if it doesn't meet the development standards.
Any other questions or comments before I open it up for public hearing? If not, I'll open up the public hearing on the ordinance change. Anyone like to speak, come forward, state your name and address. Anyone like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it back to the planning commission. What is your pleasure? Any more comments or additions? You want to pass it on to the board supervisors with the changes we haven't read and this uh right-of-way easement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made, there's a second.
Second.
There's a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, passing to the board supervisors, making no mistake, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Aye, opposed.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna say next. Same sign, you're right.
10-1.
All right, moving to the second. Rezoning request of Ms. Jones, A5 to R5?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, Ms. Jones and her husband are here in attendance this evening. They uh own property on Soapstone Road down in Jetersville, Virginia, and they are requesting a uh rezoning to, from A5 agricultural to R5 residential. It's for tax map number 51-22B. It's approximately 20 acres, 20.562 to be exact. Um, the applicant would like to rezone the property to access a divide. Um, the property is not considered a parent tract, therefore it doesn't have the access to a single-cut eligibility, or it's not single-cut eligible. Um, so they would like to rezone it to access a divide so that they could split it into two parcels. Uh, their intent would be to create a five-acre parcel along with the existing dwelling that they could sell, and I believe they have a family friend that they would like to sell that five acres in a house to while maintaining the 15 acres in their possession for the time being. They have voluntarily proffered that uh the 15 acres uh would have no more than one residence built on it and of course would remain the 15 acres. Um, and they are in attendance this evening. I will show you a map uh of where it's located. So here on your screen, you see Soapstone Road to the right of the red highlighted parcel, and that is the 20 acres right here. If you follow my mouse cursor, the 20 acres that's highlighted. The existing uh dwelling or residence is currently right here and you see some trees that look like they lined the driveway that uh leads up to the dwelling. This is the zoning map, so it's A5 and so it's surrounded by all A5 agricultural in that area. This is uh like a uh draft proposed a uh cut of what it may look like. Of course, they're gonna have to go through the subdivision process for the two-lot subdivision, so that would have to come back before staff and then we would do a staff review of that uh process. Uh, but this is what it would potentially look like with a cut here and then an additional, the, the remaining acreage um surrounding it.
Most of that open now?
I, I believe it's still open and I think it's pretty much used predominantly as a hay field.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
Hypothetically speaking.
Yep.
Being 20 acres and going to R5, hypothetically, if they wanted to, could they create like a three lots from that one, was it a flag lot or something?
That's a great question. So they, they could, but they're voluntarily proffering conditions. And the conditions are that it would be two, two lots. So they're, they're applying conditions that basically become zoning law for that parcel. So that's enforceable zoning for that parcel. So there, they will be restricted to the two lots uh due to the conditions. If the planning commission recommends approval with those conditions and the board then approves with those conditions, then the property would be subject to those conditions for its, its lifetime, really.
It's like a deed restriction or something.
It would really, it's really, it's like, it's really a zoning ordinance restriction. So what we'll do is we'll highlight it as a conditionally zoned parcel, very similar to like your, your uh solar, solar farms or your Dunn Street subdivision where they had conditions on adding interior sidewalks and those things, if they didn't do it, it would be in zoning violation. The good thing about the subdivision part is they will have to have staff approval for the divide and we're not going to approve any more than two lots. So once it's approved and recorded, it'll be recorded at that time as a two-lot subdivision. And then from there, um, the zoning ordinance will be restricted from being cut further. If you guys would like them to add a restrictive covenant in the deed, that could be something that you could, you know, make requests that they add a restrictive covenant. Uh, but right now, the enforceable side would be, it would be a zoning violation if ever down the road they wanted to cut it again or something, it'd be in violation of the zoning ordinance.
I think you did tell me this was land that was inherited.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not that, they don't live on the, they weren't living on the property. It's inherited. I assume you were only child.
Yep. And I've Mr. Ms. Jones, they're more than welcome to come up and speak if I.
Y'all have any more questions?
Represented them at all incorrectly.
So really, if this goes through and they want to sell the 15 acres after y'all prove it, they could sell it as a single-house lot if needed. All right, I'll, uh, y'all have any, I'll open for public hearing, speak on the rezoning. Anyone like to speak, come forward, state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm just, um, name is Josh Jones. I live in Palatane. My dad, Wilbur and George Jones. And both sides of the family from me. And I just want to, we don't want to keep the house. So the easiest way to do that is to separate the five acres and that's the only reason we're doing this. I like to keep the other, I can't get somebody to move to Amelia, but but you know, maybe one day. But yeah, I have no plans of selling the 15 at any time, but I just, we have no use for the house. Nobody, neither one of our kids want it, and that's the only reason we're here.
All right, appreciate you speaking. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak on it? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the planning commission. Y'all have any more questions or comments, Mr. Jones, Mr. Ms. Jones?
Cut straight and dry. If it's land, y'all be able to do what you want to do.
You're very much.
I'll make a motion, we just approved, that's what he want.
I'll second. Motion been made in second. Any more discussion? All in favor of motion, making no mistake, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, all this will come before the uh board supervisors, their Wednesday of next month. But you, y'all should get a letter on that. All right, the next public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is another rezoning request uh from Sailor's Creek Company LLC. Uh, this organization recently purchased the uh Scott properties uh over there um off of Otterburn, it's uh, and then off Crowder Street. It's the old pallet operation and the lumber operation there. So the company purchased the entire operation over there, multiple parcels. There were a number of parcels that uh were included in that transaction. All of those parcels are zoned, and I can show you the zoning M2. Now, this parcel here, this uh larger sort of L-shaped parcel, 41-37, was included in that purchase, but it's zoned RR3. Um, the company would potentially like to expand, uh, it's about 26 acres. Uh, they'd like to potentially expand their operations there. So what they are requesting is a rezoning from the RR3 to the M2 so that they could expand their uh operation further in that direction. As you see here from the GIS map, you'll see the plant and the operations here. And then on this side, you see the parcel and then you see the railroad. So it abuts the railroad on this backside and then there's some uh property here that separates it. Um, what's, I think it's Whittaker Road that runs along through here. Um, so it separates, separates from Whittaker Road. There is a couple ponds that appear to be on the GIS, but when you look at the flood map, there is no um flood zone impacts in this area, so it seems to be pretty decent land back in here um that they could develop. This imagery is a little better to show you the whole operation here and then just show you this sort of L and, sorry about that, this L in here that they're hoping to rezone to gain access to for future expansion.
The little track right there where your air is.
So this track right here is actually owned by the county.
That's the old landfill.
Yep.
Old landfill.
A representative from the company is um here this evening, um, so if I can't answer any questions, I know that she uh should be able to answer for you.
Anybody on the planning commission have any more questions before we open the public here? Only roadway is present roadway, railroad on the backside.
Railroad on the backside and then the, the property would be served internally.
Yeah, by the same.
By their operation, yep.
Any more questions before we open it up? I'll open the public hearing for the Sailor's Creek Company LLC. Changing from an R3 to an M2.
Sir, hi, Katie Bunting.
Hi.
Um, so we are looking to expand that part right now. It's really just for raw materials, storage. Um, because we want to be able to build warehouses and store material back there to kind of get touch with the overflow that we're experiencing right now. And the pond would say the pond, we wouldn't match with those because those are going to stay, we actually need those.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Guess they kind of sediment. Run or roll. Retention pumps. Anyone have any other comments or questions?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the planning commission. Anyone have any comments or against it? I assume the landowners that on the opposite side are not here at present, so they must be fine with it.
We sent out notices, um, you know, probably two weeks ago, so.
I assume they haven't had any comments. Setbacks off the property line anyway with probably present vegetation and things like that.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't quote them to you, but there's different setbacks in the district for property abutting M2 property, so M2 abutting M2 versus M2 abutting a residential property. I can't quote those, but they're, they're more substantial if it's abutted residential, so they'd have to abide by those.
That was the only question I had. Certainly don't want to put somebody in the residential section backyard. Of course, if it's just storage buildings, it's gonna make a whole lot of difference. Any other questions or comments? What's your pleasure? Making a motion to approve?
Good.
Second. Any more comments? Hearing none, all in a motion to approve, making no mistake, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, moving to the next one.
Only roadway is present roadway, railroad on the backside.
Railroad on the backside and then the, the property would be served internally.
Yeah, by the same.
By their operation, yep.
Any more questions before we open it up? I'll open the public hearing. For the, uh, Sailor's Creek Company LLC. Changing from an R3 to an M2.
Sir, hi, Katie Bunting.
Hi.
So we are looking to expand that part right now. It's really just for raw materials, storage. Um, because we want to be able to build warehouses and store material back there to kind of. Get touch with the overflow that we're experiencing right now. And the pond would say the pond wouldn't match with those because those are going to stay. We actually need those.
Guess they kind of sediment. Run or roll. Retention pumps. Anyone have any other comments or questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the plan commission. Anyone have any comments? Or against it? I assume the landowners that on the opposite side are not here at present, so they must be fine with it.
We sent out notices, um, you know, probably two weeks ago, so.
I assume they haven't had any comments. Setbacks off the property line anyway with probably present vegetation and things like that.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't quote them to you, but there's different setbacks in the district for property abutting. M2 property, so M2 abutting M2 versus M2 abutting a residential property. I can't quote those, but they're. They're more substantial if it's abundant residential, so they'd have to abide by those.
That was the only question I had. Certainly don't want to put somebody in the residential section. Backyard. Of course, if it's just storage buildings, it's going to make a whole lot of difference. Any other questions or comments? What's your pleasure? Making a motion to approve.
Second.
Any more comments? Hearing none, all in a motion to approve. Making known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving to the next one. Uh, let's see, four.
Mr. Chairman, this, uh, third rezoning request this evening, um, is actually a county initiated request. Some of you all may be familiar as, uh, there's a couple of you that I think were on the planning commission at the time. Uh, that the original project came through. In March of two thousand and three, the board approved a rezoning of about eleven hundred acres of land. Um, and I can show you some of it here on this map. Oh, this is only part of it, but this parcel here, um, and then well on, uh, further to the left towards Rodofill Road. The board had approved in two thousand and three about eleven hundred acres to be rezoned for a project that was known as the Estates at Foster's Farm. It was to be a large recreational area that would include a golf course and many other amenities and second homes. As a part of that request, these five parcels here, seventeen dash four dash one, seventeen dash four dash two, so on three, four and five. Were included in that request. They were, they were not owned by the developer or the developer, the investment company that was working with the developer. They were owned by another individual, but he allowed them to be included in, in that request. However, the developer and the company that, you know, the, the firm that they've been working with, neither of those ever assumed ownership of these five parcels. And they actually have since transferred hands three or four times. Uh, most recently, three of them have had houses built on them, um, that they were approved, uh. Twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe was before I came on staff, um, and then two of them remain undeveloped. They are however zoned, as you see here on the zoning map. PCRD, so they were a part of the initial rezoning as I stated. With that being said, these parcels would be adherent to all the conditions that were voluntarily proffered. At the time that that request was brought forth and approved. So these prop, properties would be, uh, subservient to those conditions, just like I, we discussed earlier with the other property. How those conditions placed through the rezoning process live with the lifespan of all the parcels included. Well, one of the conditions was that there would be no full-time dwellings. Um, however, when these houses were built, they were built as full-time dwellings. At the time, there was, um. Confusion because the applications that were submitted from the development firm stated that they were zoned A5. And evidently it was a staff overlook at that time that didn't catch that they were not zoned A5. Uh, which they are not zoned A5, they're zoned PCRD. So technically those houses should not be allowed to be there zoning wise.
What size of those lots?
Uh, the total acreage is seventy acres. The smallest lot is two acres. So there's a two and a half. There's a three, four, four, and then there's a larger fifty-five, sixty acre lot. The lots were included in a subdivision since August eighth, nineteen eighty-eight, so none of the lots can be further subdivided. Unless rezoned like we saw tonight, there, none of them have parent tract status. Um, but this rezoning would basically bring them into alignment with the rest of the area out there. And it would make them A5 agricultural. It would alleviate the zoning issues that technically three of them have. And it would allow the other two to be developed in consistency with the A5 district, meaning they could basically get one house on them, on each of them.
Yeah, we rezoned them to something that they don't meet the minimum lot size for?
We can, and they would just be non-conforming because the subdivision was actually done prior to the, this rezoning. So they were non-conforming. When they were originally subdivided, they were non-conforming the modern standards and then they were rezoned to this PCRD. So the lots had been standing even longer than the zoning. So they would just be considered not conforming lots, meaning. They're allowed to be built on or allowed to be used as long as they meet the setbacks, so on and so forth. But they're just existing lots that don't meet the conforming, the modern standards.
Didn't that zone in, when it was put into place, I was thinking it was a timeframe. If they had to build this golf course and stuff or revert it back to the original zoning, was anything like that, did you run into that?
So that, so that initially, when it was approved in two thousand and three. The board approved it that the golf course had to be built first before building permit could be pulled. That was the.
Right. There was something funny about it.
That was the requirement. However, in two thousand and seven, the board were, the, the board amended that on request from the applicant. To state that the golf course and the houses could be built concurrent, simultaneously. Um, we have actually had a, and that's a totally another topic than sort of these five lots, but we've had a building permit. Submitted for one of the forty-nine lots that was subdivided as a part of this development. Um, and so that. Sir?
Part of eleven hundred acres?
Well, they're.
Part of this.
Part of the other.
Part of the.
So they have pulled a building permit for one house in the first phase that they had approved as a subdivision.
The developer actually took deposits on some of those lots that didn't even have streets or anything built on.
But anyways, these five, it's a zoning correct, it's really a zoning map correction to bring these five back into compliance. They're not owned by the developer that is, did the original thing. They've been transferred multiple times. So it's just cleaning them up.
Clear as mud. Any more question? So there's no homes on these five parcels?
There's three. And they were, they were built in the twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
And you say that they're living full-time there, it's not.
Full-time residents.
The only part we're changing is, well, voting on is the little red section.
The red area, the five parcels, it's about se, about seventy acres.
This was a very slow process at the time. Came for the planning commission a number of times, because. There was. A lot of questions. About.
Yeah, like you were putting. On airport or helicopter or day or something like. They had big plans for all that stuff in there. He was going to get Tiger Woods to provide, pay for a golf course to go in there and all that stuff and end up. It's Henry, Henry Foster's nephew from Northern Virginia. And so I remember when all that was going on. In fact, I think I surveyed all the original property after.
Every once in a while that guy will reach out to us, talk about, he's going to do it now, I am.
You ask him when?
Like, it's been twenty years.
Problem was, some of those interior lots like Brady was talking about, I know he took deposits on some of those to keep his cash flow going. But they weren't needing, it weren't even any streets built or. I says, you know, then I says, some, one of these days somebody's going to want to see their land or get their money back or something. I guess it's kind of getting to that point. Any more questions or comment?
So I'm sorry, what, what was, what was the issue? Why couldn't they be built on originally while was it near here?
So they, the, the zoning they were zoned to, this plant conditional recreation district, they were zoned to that with a litany of conditions, like four pages of conditions. One of the main conditions was that there would be no permanent dwellings. So even today on all the PCRD property, if anyone came in for a building permit, it can only be used as a second dwelling. So that was the, that was one of the conditions. And the reason at the time, from what I can see through reviewing all the minutes. Was the board didn't want to approve this big development and then it'd be families and kids that had school bus and all this other stuff. So they. They wanted assurance that it wouldn't be that. And so the developer voluntarily proffered that it would be all second homes. Meaning no one would live there longer than six months out of the year.
It was designed to be a golf course community that.
Vacation.
Vacation homes like.
Yeah.
Like Pinehurst has, has got like condos where people come and sit for the weekend, play golf and stuff like, that's what the whole thing was designed for.
So as long as it was a vacation home, these five lots would be a problem.
Exactly. You're exactly right. But now we have three lots that have.
Be a problem because they're not building a golf course.
Well, it would be, yeah. If they were building the golf course concurrently, if they were working on the golf course. Then they could build on some of these lots.
So then how is the building permit that you mentioned getting pulled? How is that moving?
That's on one of the forty-nine lots. They're pulling the first one, so they're pulling the first building permit. And simultaneously they have done some clearing and some other things. They've made progress. Towards beginning the golf course. And I think that's the biggest issue with the board's amendment, the board supervisor amendment two thousand and seven. Is the language says concurrently, so it's up to staff to determine what concurrently means. One house per one hole, so it's a one-hole golf course and then you get a house, you know?
You got twenty houses and no, yeah.
We're treading there lightly as possible, but at, with the first building permit, that also activates the road, uh, requirement. But it is all private roads because that was back when the county allowed private roads. So none of these roads will be state accepted. But they still will have to be brought to a certain standard within a certain timeframe or building permits will be paused. But that's again, that's a sort of a. Maybe another special session that the planning commission could have to discuss that development, to review it. This here is just for these five parcels. And what caught it was we had an individual come in to pull a building permit on one of the lots. And when I went to review the building permit, I saw, I was like, well, you can't build here. And then that cascaded into finding all this other stuff.
What'd he think of it? Oops.
He, the, the person was sold a piece of property thinking he was going to build on it. And the people who sold it believed it to be so evidently, and the title companies never caught, caught, and the closing attorneys didn't catch it. That the zoning wasn't correct and the appraisers didn't catch it.
See, that worries me.
And nobody caught it. They built three homes and nobody caught it.
And that worries me about not y'all, but like us saying fifteen, never going to be built on whatever. But then we're showing that like, nobody's catching those things. So I guess that's one thing that worries me about the, the, the way.
Conditions.
Yeah, is like.
In the zoning.
Yeah.
You'd be surprised how many title companies issue title binders and they've never pulled the deed or looked at your property.
Yeah.
I've run into that before. Any more questions before we open it for public hearing? I'll open the public hearing. For these five lots. Changing from, uh, what's it? TRCD to A5. Anyone like to speak? Come forward, state your name. And address. Seeing none or hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the plan commission. What's your pleasure? Feel sorry for the three people that thought, thought they had it right. But, uh, that's for sure. But I think it needs to go back into whatever it was.
I think we need to recommend for approval, uh, to clear, clear this up because.
You're going to put that into motion?
Yeah, sound like a vote.
There's second. Motion made in second. Any more discussion?
Who was the second on that? Sorry about that. Oh, Mr. Andy, all right.
So it's the current owner, like this comes from the county or the in line, I guess, with this, they can build.
So I got the phone numbers of the three, well, the fourth and the fifth owner, the one that pulled the building permit. And the fifth one was actually the individual that owned all five. I've spoken with both of them directly. They're both on board. Of the three houses, I got phone numbers from the realtor that served those three. And made successful contact with one after calling pretty much every day. The other two never returned my calls. Um, and the one that I spoke with was. Confused about the entire situation. Very weird phone call to get. And I had to ask him if he wanted me to explain it to him or if he wanted me to tell him everything was going to be okay and just know something's going on.
How does that affect the cuts on the twenty, on the, the big, the large track?
The large track is not a parent track, so it does not have single cut eligibility. Um, and it also was a part of a five lot subdivision, so it was a part of a platted subdivision since eighty-eight, meaning it cannot be family split either. So it doesn't have family cut eligibility, doesn't have single cut eligibility.
So it's a single lot.
It's a single lot unless he came back to request a rezoning, similar to what we had earlier, where, request a rezoning. For something that would open up a subdivision.
I assume that big lot does have road frontage open, up our little houses.
I don't think so. I think it has a little bit of road frontage there.
No, because what the road is. There's nothing.
What makes me think probably what happened in the nineties when this was approved, this looks sort of, Mr. Easter probably speak to this, it looks sort of like a cluster. They cut five and they cut five lots. And put four real tight with a big one in the back. And that's often how clusters were done back in the day.
That was the intention.
Yeah.
Because all the little lots that were going to be out in the middle were, they were little small lots. And, uh, I think they were one acre lots maybe. Any more discussion? Motion's been made in second.
Clear this up.
All in favor, making known by saying aye. Uh, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. I guess you go to the back of your package, just told what, what we covered during the year. We hadn't written any meetings. Only comment I had is, uh, Mr. Warner asked a question if we could get to packet earlier. Think I got an email on that. That would y'all's pleasure to come soon enough. You want it earlier or?
I'll try.
Or it could be available earlier if you want it. I get too soon, I look over and then it kind of gets old, but.
Yeah, I felt like four days was really short, like if we were out of town.
Well, like if you get on Friday and the meeting's on Monday, is that, is that when you were?
Yeah.
And here.
So we're given purview to really look at these properties and walk it if we want to, if I leave a lot of time to do that.
All right.
All right, we'll just try for seven days. But I, I know it can be tight.
Yep.
It's supposed to go, some week, yeah, this one was a lot.
But it'll always be the next month.
Do it.
It can always just be pulled over to the next month if someone ready.
That's true.
Also, do they not have to? I noticed that one didn't have a map or drawing or anything, like, is that not for?
County?
Um, no, it was the one behind the lumber company.
In their application packet?
It'd be nice to, to have something to look at, I mean.
I, I think they did list the tax map number.
Without us having to.
I guess everybody has a copy of the. Many assignments. I know we meet the thirtieth at ten o'clock for the.
CIP.
CIP. Uh, I assume we're going to probably meet again for the comprehensive.
Sh, some, should be soon. We're going to discuss that tonight with the future land use map.
Okay.
And, um, if you'd like to be on another committee. Just speak up. Don't feel bashful. But that's the only comments I had that I'd heard anything. You want to go with informational things?
Sure. Yeah. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the annual report. We did, uh. Twice as many special exception permits last year, four times as many rezonings last year, uh, than we did the year prior. So we were definitely rolling and last year we had four rezonings, which was four times as many as the year before. And this year we've had three in the first meeting, so.
We're already on track to break.
Already on track to tie last year and then possibly even double it or triple it. So things have been, things have been busy. And I think that's something that, uh, is a good thing, but also something for the planning commission to just keep your mind on that. Things have been busy, which means Amelia County's having some development. I'm not sure how long this window will last. With that being said, what I have for you all tonight is a couple of things. I have the previous land use map. That we've operated all of, um, so if you guys pass that around. It's the, the previous future land use map. As you all know, this sort of guide directs. Everything that we do here as a county, decision-making on zoning, uh, decision-making on rezoning requests. And then what I have is a map that CRC had prepared. It's a very rough draft, number one for you all to look at. Of how the future land use map may or could be amended in this next conference of plan updates.
You have a, you don't have to have a target. A target date for next comprehension.
You have a, you don't have to have a target, a target date for the next comprehensive plan meeting, do you?
We can decide that tonight. Yeah, that's.
I think when this one was made back in.
That's all the part that's coming and ass. Budget time.
Like twenty, well, twenty thirteen, whatever that was, it was just.
On that original, when all that green was pretty much agriculture.
That's all rural preservation. So now that everybody's got it and maybe taking a second to look at it. The existing future land use map that was approved in the twenty sixteen update, it actually existed prior to that. The twenty sixteen update had included recommendations for this map to be amended further. Those amendments were never made. So the twenty sixteen recommendations were never fulfilled, amending this map further. It included, instead of having five categories, village development area, economic development area, rural village area, rural residential development area. And rural preservation area. The twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen update recommended to have a lot more areas, like a corridor, crossroads area. Corridor, mixed use area that's outlined in the comp plan now that we operate off of. Those areas were never defined and never added to the map. So staff has operated off of the existing map, which is the, the older one. At this time, with the new update, the comp plan committee talked about that, all the recommendations, and the comp plan committee has discussed. How to move forward, whether we should implement those recommendations, or if we need to shift and do something else. Based on the discussions, what was clear in the comp plan committee was that the comp plan committee wanted. The three sixty area to be highlighted as a corridor for industrial and commercial development. But with, but there was much discussion that that corridor also be respected as a thoroughfare. So it'd be outlined as the area for future commercial industrial growth, but we be respected as thoroughfare and not turned into a street. Like we see in the Midlothian area. What was then mentioned in the comp plan committee meetings was that the Jetersville area remain a strong residential development area. Because of its proximity to three oh seven and Farmville and some of the growth in that direction. And so that side of the county has a little bit of a residential development area that could expand. And then furthermore, what was mentioned was the, uh, need to keep growth on the eastern end of the county. Respecting good farmland while also trying to keep growth on that end near the school system. Near the infrastructure, the sanitary district, and of course, near the eastern boundary, which is where most of the pressure's coming from. So this first stab that the CRC put together and then they sent to me and I made some revisions, just rough revisions on Friday and then sent back. They sent it to me on Friday. I sent back and they sent me back this one today. It's just a rough view of maybe what. Could be, as you see, the biggest changes is that the rural residential area, development area grows as compared to the last one. So it grows. Also, what grows is the eastern development area, which is yet to be defined. That'd be something that you all would have, have to define. And what that means and what that looks like, as well as the courthouse village and sanitary district, um, area. You'd have to really define what you want there. This view also makes it a parcel specific area instead of a bubble area. And that's another change that you all might like or might not like, being parcel specific or a bubble. The hard thing with staff, when it's a bubble, is we end up having to try to identify which parcel it ends at. Because you have to know a firm boundary when a request comes in, whether it's in rural preservation or rural residential development or the village.
So these lines we're seeing with the white are?
All the lines on the new map are parcel specific, according to the current GIS shape file.
It's the new map, right?
Yes, sir. So tonight is not necessarily, um, a, a time where y'all need to have mass discussion and make a decision. The CRC is gonna come to your February meeting and present on this. Tonight was more just to get it in front of you. If you guys have any instant feedback to discuss it, but let you maul on it maybe over the next couple of weeks. And if you guys would email me that feedback as it comes to you, then I can give it to the CRC. And then when they come present, you guys would be first, prepared for a fruitful discussion.
Now the comprehensive plan committee has seen this as, as yet.
Yeah. That's another thing we need to do tonight, which is schedule a comp plan meeting. Our last one was in early December.
Probably have one before they come in February.
Yep.
Yeah, that way we can give them.
You don't have any dates? Oh, the seventh of February is a Wednesday. I'm tied up. Twenty first, I'm tied up.
And I, I debated about going through the committee first, but I figured I'd bring this to everyone because the CRC is coming in February and I didn't know. You know what I mean? I wanted everyone at least get a look at it before the CRC comes.
I mean, it does mirror a lot of what we talked about. I mean, in case the people that aren't in the committee aren't, you know, if you go back and, uh, I, I know y'all probably don't go like. Minutes of our workshops, but, you know, a lot of this was stuff that we brought up during committee about extending that. White corridor all the way out, three sixty, all the way west.
I keep, uh. Businesses close to three sixty and the housing developments behind the businesses. Spreading out. Does anyone have a? Anybody on the committee have a date that they can't come or would like to come?
I'm pretty open up February so far.
What day suits you best, Brady? Do you have any preference?
I'm pretty sure I'm good. Let me see, I know. We're getting busy.
Well, what day are they coming?
I'm good, I'm good. The first, they're, they're gonna be coming the fourth Monday of February, which will be the twenty, twenty six. So we have the whole month of February. I'm pretty much good every.
Oh, they're coming to the meeting. Sorry, I'm.
I'm for Tuesday or Thursday.
So if y'all want to do, um. Next week, that would be the first, because the thirtieth is the CIP committee meeting. So we can't do the thirtieth. So we have the first, which is a Thursday.
How about? How about Tuesday, I can't, how about Tuesday, thirteenth? Tuesdays actually were better for me.
Tuesday, thirteenth, I'm fine there.
Tuesday, the sixth doesn't work.
No, I gotta just, unfortunately, I'm getting a crown. Looking forward to it. I'll be in over three hours. I mean, thirteenth is a Tuesday, it's good for me.
That'd be alright.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm good.
Tuesday, the thirteenth?
I don't know of anything right now on my calendar for the thirteenth.
What time?
July ten.
July, ten, twelve.
Alright.
Thirteen.
Ten o'clock.
January thirteenth.
Just for the Valentine's Day for you, why?
It's always things when it's on Valentine's Day.
It's not Valentine's Day, you're not in trouble yet.
Well, if you come to a meeting here, you stop by drugstore, food line.
Teeth is.
Last for a year. Are you gonna, we'll set that for the thirteenth at ten o'clock.
Thirteenth, ten o'clock. Any other, any other comments until then?
I think we just, we go here, we don't have one here, Manbur. Um, you know, at one time, that was kind of. Spot they thought make, might be more residential, but I don't think it hadn't been much growth down there quite a while. At one time, you were getting. House developments right around in there for ways.
I definitely think down that, down there in ten years, probably.
Probably so. I guess the other side was all back in there, I got some out. Road cuts through there.
So internet.
They can't communicate down here.
But I, I think there's a big challenge maintaining the, the really good farmland that runs through the center of the county. And. The challenge of maintaining that, a challenge of the pressure that's on six oh four.
Yes, six oh four is.
Eventually, the challenge of the eastern three sixty side of the skin quarter, whole wide expansion comes through. There's a lot of sort of challenges that I think. This process, being a twenty, twenty-five year outlook, really needs to be some good thought put into this. More thought than I have in my brain, so hope y'all have.
Yeah, I feel like the eastern development area could be extended up six oh four out of Battle County.
What we had even mentioned. Not sure, well, yeah, sure.
That's exactly what you do if you want bedroom communities.
I think the extent of white though, uh, that's skin quarter, I think you're gonna be looking at a lot of residential people and be out in Amelia, but. Out of Chesterfield, I think you're gonna do a lot of push for more development, residential development stuff in that area, probably.
But those. Live here, spend money in Chesterfield.
But fortunately, it's not any place skin, spend money between the end of where Pillway's gonna be and, and. Chula, especially with good skin quarter market to.
Thing I'm talking about, like power ten, you know, they built their first food line right there on sixty. Ten miles closer to Richmond, built the second food line. I thought, hey, in the world, two food lines. He talked to the first food line, put in there, but twice the business of the other one. And he said, the reason is, people coming out of Cumberland. Down sixty, they stop at that one, cause it's closer to the homes, eh? So it's, uh.
I think if people.
Lot of differences far like that.
If they extended Pillway out to three sixty, to skin quarter, I think people would, would come that route and drive, if they lived around Chula area. They would drive onto the food line immediately, buy groceries rather than deal with the, all the traffic and stuff down there to go back that direction, I think.
But if it comes out and the traffic won't be as bad, get somewhere a lot faster.
Hopefully. Or is anything, anything else you need to bring up?
Just that CIP is on the thirtieth at ten o'clock. So for all the CIP committee members, don't forget, I was sending an email out with all the CIP projects in a packet. The, uh, disclosure, real estate holdings is due. I got several of y'all tonight. If you didn't get it in, please get it in before February first. That'll be it. We have not. So they should hopefully.
Like, cause I saw the one, I'm like, okay. And I was like, man, I cannot buy the other one.
We have two more coming, two more coming.
So they just, I got.
And we're gonna, yeah.
So what did y'all decide? Where did y'all decide on the one out?
There's potentially one next to the veteran center.
Okay, yeah.
But we're waiting on a confirmed easement. We've had verbal agreement support, potentially one off of a, uh. Business three sixty where Wayside Avenue intersection is on the Southern State side.
Like near the car wash.
Have a safe trip home. Hopefully it'll be a little warm for a while. Be wet. Even while it gets old after one.